...PL 1975, Chapter 231. Adequate notice of this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do our roll call there?
Councilman Chase?
Here.
Carl Hauck?
Here.
Raleigh Steinhauer?
Here.
Cecile MacGyver?
Here.
Robert Mettler?
Here.
Charles Oniaka? James Pettit?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Edward Patosnak?
Todd Brown?
Here.
Chairman Orsini?
Here. Before we get started, a couple of administrative things. First of all, if there is anyone here for the hearing on VGS Holdings, PLN 15-00003, that's carried to April 15th with no further notification needed. Administratively on the board, just a couple of announcements. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge to my left Todd Brown. He's been a board member for unfortunately a very short time, but he'll be moving on and actually moving out of the township, which is what is indeed necessitating his resignation on the board after tonight. So, thank you for your service, even though it was short. Always appreciate people who are willing to step up and volunteer for boards and committees in the township, so.
Thank you, Chairman.
Best of luck. Appreciate it. And I hope in your new community you'll step up and do the same thing.
Definitely, thank you.
And I'd also like to acknowledge to my right Raleigh Steinhauer, who is coming onto the board as Mayor's Representative.
Thank you.
Minutes from February 4th, 2015. If there are any comments or corrections, let me know. If not, I'll take them.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Cecile MacGyver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
James Pettit?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Todd Brown?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Okay, we have a few resolutions tonight. First one is Gennato, PLN 0700005.
Chairman, there are two actions. One is with respect to Lot 25.01, the other one is with respect to 25.02.
Right.
And there are different members that can vote with respect to each.
Okay.
For the first one, 25.01.
Yeah, let's do them separately, though. So, let's have a motion first for where the motion on Lot 25.01.
All right, let me identify who can make that. It'd be Councilman Chase, Cecile MacGyver, Robert Mettler, Robert Thomas, or yourself can make a motion to vote.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Cecile MacGyver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. And the motion on Lot 25.02, Mark, do you want to just let everyone know who's available? Because like you said, it's a different.
Yep. Councilman Chase, Carl Hauck, Cecile MacGyver, Robert Mettler, and Mr. Pettit.
Again, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Cecile MacGyver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
James Pettit?
Yes.
Okay. PvP Franklin LLC, PLN 1400017.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Cecile MacGyver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
James Pettit?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. And last but not least, Summerfields at Franklin, PLN 150001, I think, was this for the commercial?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Cecile MacGyver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
James Pettit?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
And Chairman, can I ask, we are in receipt of the April retainer from the attorney. It's the same amount of 833. I could request action on that retainer.
Sure. Do you have an entertaining motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Raleigh Steinhauer?
Yes.
Cecile MacGyver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Charlie, oh, no, he's not here. James Pettit?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Todd Brown?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes.
Thank you.
We have one discussion item tonight. Timothy Kelly, PLN 0800008, request for extension of time to file. It just so happens that this was an application from 2008. At the time, our Planning Board Attorney, Mr. Clarkin, was representing the client. So, he's going to recuse himself from this discussion and let the client fly on his own. If you can just give an active microphone and just explain very briefly what you're looking for in for extension of time and how much time you'd need.
Okay, I guess we need a 45-day extension. When I was here in December, we just had to put monuments in the ground and then conservation easement markers. We started to do it, and then the bad winter came in, and this is back in the woods, so nobody could get back out there to finish it up. So, we're going to finish it up next week, and then we just have to put it on the site plan, and that should be the last thing that needs to be done.
Okay, so how long do you think you'd need?
Um.
A month, two months, three months?
You know, let's do the three months, just to play it safe.
Okay, so three months from today is going to be April, May, June 1st?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Forty-five should be more than enough, but I'm going to play it safe this time, so.
But let's do that, let's do June. Huh? Oh, well, time flies. Oh, then let's do July 1st. It can't go that fast. All right, did July 1st.
I'll make a motion to approve an extension until July 1st.
Second.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hauck?
Yes.
Cecile MacGyver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
James Pettit?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Todd Brown?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Your problem, Mr. Kelly, take care. Our other, that's really all the hearings, discussion, resolutions we have tonight. So, the other main thing is the work session, new business for Catawba Park. So, let me just set the stage for how this is going to work. Like in the past, we are tasked as a planning board of confirming or denying to council whether or not the Catawba Park plans conform to the master plan, and that's our sole duty tonight. So, what we're going to do is after I sort of set the stage for things, we're going to hear from Township Manager Bornlocker and Alice and, I'm sorry, oh, Tom, Gail from the Historic Commission, just to, just to.
Tom Zilnick.
Okay, sorry, Tom Zilnick. So, we'll hear from everybody about what the plan is as it stands, and then Mark Healy, our Planning Director, will talk a little bit about his plan comments, and then we'll have any public comment. Just to let everybody know, our only objective tonight is to answer the question of whether the plan conforms to the master plan last revised in 2006, and there's also some historical information that even predates that. What we're not here to do tonight is entertain comments on whether there should be, you know, one less cricket field, or whether it should be there at all. It's really, that's a matter of, that's up to council. We're just asking, does this conform to what we had in the master plan in the open space and recreation element? So, with that, I'll turn it over to Township Manager Bornlocker.
Thank you, Mr. Orsini. Thank you, Planning Board, for this opportunity tonight. So, council has asked for this park to be reviewed by the Planning Board, as the chairman said, to see that it does in fact conform with the master plan, and also to make any comments in report form that would be conveyed to council at the public hearing as to matters of site plan and what would be anticipated once the site plan is prepared, should this plan move forward after the public hearing. So, just some historical information about this particular park's concept. The first concept for Catawba Park to be presented to the public was presented to the public in June of 2014. This plan on the left was in fact the plan that was presented to council. The plan is one that comes with primarily from the Recreation Needs Assessment that was done and completed in 2012 to identify those needs in the township as far as recreational facilities were concerned. Most of the amenities that were included in this first concept plan came directly from that Recreation Needs Assessment. This plan called for a three-phase development of the park, with the first phase in the upper left-hand side here that included tennis courts, basketball courts, a picnic pavilion, a trail network, a tot lot, restroom facilities, and a parking lot. Phase two, which is here on the right, to the right of phase one, included a parking lot, picnic pavilion, and two cricket pitches. And phase three, which is in this section down at the lower end of the park property, included two softball fields, a parking lot, and three soccer fields. As a result of the public hearing, there was a significant amount of concern that this was an overbuild of the property. The residents and public speakers at that public hearing voiced concern over this overbuild. Council requested that a new concept plan be designed, and the one on the right is now the plan, the concept plan for the park development. As you can see, phase three was removed completely from the build proposal. Phase one has been reduced in impact. The basketball courts have been removed, the parking lot has been reduced in size, the tennis courts and picnic pavilion and tot lot and restroom facilities remain. Phase two has basically remained the same, however, the request was to move the cricket pitches as far from this property line as could be, taking into account some existing wetlands that have been delineated. The parking lot and picnic pavilion remain. That is the complete proposal now that will be presented to the public, hopefully sometime in June, based on the fact that we are now completing my roadshow, which has started with the Open Space Advisory Committee and went to Recreation Advisory, and we are now here with the Planning Board. The next step in this process would be a public hearing, which we will follow Green Acres regulations once again and announce at least 30 days in advance. So, once we are done here and we can get the feedback from the Planning Board as requested by council, we can move ahead with the scheduling of the public hearing. So, that is Catawba Park as it's currently in concept plan.
Does the board have any questions or comments from Mr. Bornlocker, or Alice, or or Mr. Zilnick?
I have one question, which is, I noticed on what we have, it shows certain areas that it says potential wetlands. I wondered, has a wetland survey been done on this property, and will this then potentially have to be changed?
The wetland survey was done prior to the development of the concept plan.
Very good.
Ted?
I would like to see at least space for a community garden. The idea of having one there has been around for a while. I think the Open Space Committee specifically recommended one. I would think that somewhere about, you know, by the corner of where the entrance drive meets Old Fleet Road would, could be a good place for it that would not, you know, that would not interfere with anything else. Not necessarily there, but that is what comes to mind.
Open Space did make that recommendation, and I believe that that will be part of their written recommendation to be made at the public hearing.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, I remember, I think that was before the first hearing even that they made that recommendation.
I have one, no.
Todd? Bob?
Thank you for the background between the first concept plan and the second. Maybe I just need a little more background information. What happened to the site planner that caused the change in site plan from a three-phase site plan to only two, as well as cutting down on parking, cutting down on the baseball?
What happened? A public hearing.
Okay, so this was a.
This room full of people who said.
Cut it down.
That that's too much.
Okay.
And council said, "Mr. Manager, take it back to the drawing board and cut it down to size."
So, what was phase three? What will become of that?
Nothing. It will remain in its current state, which is open space.
Okay.
It'll remain in its natural state, and one of the concerns to, and I'll just, a little background, so there is the 10-mile-run brook that runs through here. There was some concern on the part of open space that this development of that area here would have a negative impact on that area, which in its natural state is actually probably one of the most beautiful parts of Franklin Township, so I understand their concern. It's someplace that I enjoy being myself. So, there is a trail, and it's difficult to see, but there is a trail that runs along the outside of this property already. It's part of our current existing trail inventory, and it connects with that area that goes out to the Bunker Hill Natural Area in our open space inventory. So, that will be left as dedicated open space.
I might just, I might just supplement that by saying that the trail is supposed to cross the brook. There was a plan even approved by the state for a bridge. Then the position of the brook changed, and I think a new plan was submitted, and I don't know that it's ever emerged from the DEP.
It has not, but you can, at certain times of the year, still cross that brook. You just get your feet a little wet, that's all.
You partly answered what I was getting into. It deals with phase three. The two fields up there that are eliminated, baseball or softball, whatever.
Correct.
Were listed in the master plan as definite needs, and I, you know, I heard you say how different parts of the other phases were reduced. Was there any discussion about reducing what was in phase three but keeping maybe one of the softball fields?
So, there were, excuse me, there were a number of concerns about the lack of buffer between this particular area of the park development and the houses that border it along this section here. As you can see, these are all single-family homes that were part of the Hovnanian subdivisions that were done. So, and there's not only just difficulty in screening, there's also some terrain issues here, I guess we could say some topographical issues here, that if you were to go out and look, there would be, need to be a tremendous amount of movement of earth in this area, and we were talking about this area being tiered to allow for this development. So, given those concerns, the concerns of the area residents, the decision was just to abandon this and leave it in its natural state, and that seemed to be something that's been met with some favor in the discussions that have been had so far. There has been discussion, and you're absolutely right, Mr. Thomas, about the need for these types of athletic fields in this portion of the township. The township has begun discussions with the Board of Education about the possibility of construction of athletic fields at the new school site on Claremont Road that was recently part of the referendum that passed that the Board of Education brought forward. So, there's not necessarily an abandonment of the construction of athletic fields in the southern portion of the township. It just was felt that this was an inappropriate location for it.
I think you explained it pretty well for me, even I understand that. Just as an afterthought, when you mentioned the talks with the Board of Ed and Claremont Road, that, when that school came in for a review, there's very specific testimony from the Board of Ed about it being a joint, the fields being a joint project between the town and the schools for a recreation element. And actually, I think, I guess maybe you brought up a good point, that the places that have those fields that we need and can't put there, mainly the schools, generally, I'm hearing from many, many people, keep them off limits to people. So, if there will be some discussions, and along those lines, maybe the town wouldn't have to rebuild all of these things.
We'll see. Need my crystal ball for that, but yes. I mean, the decisions to build athletic fields where they can be shared during the day by the schools and in the evenings and weekends by the youth organizations.
Well, I'm just being the devil's advocate. I wanted to remind on record that Board of Ed proposed that at this forum.
At this board, right, to this board.
Yes.
Well, I'm glad that you will put that on the record again as we begin to pursue that once again with the Board of Education.
I won't forget.
I'm sure you won't, Mr. Thomas. You very rarely do.
Bob, I have a question.
Yes.
It sort of goes to the theme of a community garden. What with this proposed build-out would happen to the vegetable stand that's there?
So, that's a very good question, and it's difficult to see, but what you can see is it says existing homestead. This is the property that's currently, and we do not own this property. This is deeded to the family that originally owned the entire farm, and then, so the, real quick history, they sold the farm to a developer. The township then bought the farm from the developer, and so that's how we came into ownership of this property. But the corner property right here, which you see is actually a separate lot, will remain unless there is some need to realign Old Fleet Road due to sightline issues or what have you. Once this goes to be engineered, the plan would be to allow them to continue. They will continue their farming operation on their existing property now, and they lease a portion of this property, which they'll continue to be allowed, you know, we'll still lease it for agricultural purposes, so they can continue to grow their vegetables, and there's no plans to discontinue their farm stand on the corner at this particular time.
Well, that's good, that's good to hear, because at some point in time when this was being discussed, I heard some rumor, hopefully it's more fact than rumor, that they were actually willing to help either like provide water or do something for the benefit of a community garden. So, to be able to leverage that.
And I see Councilman Chase shaking his head. I know that.
This was said at an Open Space Committee hearing.
Right.
I can't say that I have it from them.
And I don't, but I mean, I, they have been very supportive through this entire process, you know, and even to the point of, you know, they're very accepting of the fact that this property will be for recreational purposes. There was, I met with them personally, and so it would not surprise me to find out that they look to support a community garden there as well. And that's why, and while Councilman Chase said, "In this particular area," I immediately thought about "in this particular area," which is closer to their current operation, which would allow them to do that, you know, cooperate with that program.
We could ask them.
We could certainly ask them.
Any other questions from the board for Bob? No? Are Alice or Bob?
They were here just in case.
You're just for support?
They had that question that I didn't know the answer to, and he knew about the LOI, and I didn't, so there you go.
So, what I'd like to do now is turn to Mark Healy's report. Mark has some really good background here that I think speaks to the principal purpose of why we're here. So, Mark, if you could talk a little bit about conformance to the master plan and that history, and then we'll pause again to see if the board has any questions, and then go on to the concept plan comments that you have on pages four and five, and we'll go and see if we have any more questions, and then we'll go to the public.
I think this probably proves that you've seen my, my style or writing style before, because this actually, I wrote it, although it's not actually just from me. This is actually from the Township's Technical Review Committee, which is myself, Township Engineers Office, the Traffic Safety Bureau of the Police Department, Health, Parks, et cetera. So, we reviewed the concept plan and prepared this memo collectively, and what it does is it basically covers what we believe the Planning Board's role should be in reviewing this plan, which has been stated already. What does the master plan say with respect to this capital improvement? And also, we kind of treated it, as we feel you should, as a, kind of like a pre-application for a site plan. This is a concept plan. We have a developer that comes to us. We kind of give them our feedback. These are the things you should develop or think about when you're developing the actual engineering drawings. So, first, with respect to the master plan, and this memo, I should say as well, could form the basis of the memo from the Planning Board to council. If you agree with what it says, or if you have modifications, changes, whatever, obviously, let me know. First, with respect to the master plan, I'm just going to, since you've already been providing the memo, going to do the highlights. The need for recreation facilities in the southern portion of the park goes back to the 1999 master plan. I cited a few things in here from the 1999 master plan. It talks about the need for southern, or neighborhood parks with an S in the southern area of town, and then it also talks, and that's in the short term, back in 1999, zero to five, and then in the longer term, the five to 10-year, it talks about the need for a community park. It indicates that a larger community park is needed in the area south of Jakes and Coeur d'Alou Lane due to the residential development that was occurring down there, and it says, "Depending on community preference, the park should have tennis, basketball, volleyball courts, a roller hockey area, open playfields and playgrounds, circus, fitness, walking trails, passive recreation, and ancillary athletic field space, as well as restrooms. The community park should be located adjacent to existing open space or parkland in order to continue green links within the township." So, again, that's from the 1999 master plan. In 2000, the open space, when the Open Space Advisory Committee was formed, they did kind of a plan, long-term plan for how they were going to function and how the Open Space Trust Fund was going to be used, and that plan is basically, well, not basically, it reiterated this recommendation verbatim. Then fast forward to the 2006 master plan. The master plan got a little bit more specific, whereas the 1999 plan didn't identify specific sites, the 2006 plan did. It basically, it identified this site as a potential site, as well as the township-owned open space at the corner of Sedam and South Middlebushes. Those are two potential sites where this southern community park can go. It identified a large number, I don't know how it anticipated all of this would be fit on either site, two to three soccer fields, two to three softball fields, cricket pitch, two to four basketball courts, skate park, water spray park, jogging and bike trails, tot lot, restrooms, picnic shelter, roller hockey, and two tennis courts. So, that again was in the 2006 master plan. Fast forward to 2012, the township commissioned a recreation, Preservation Recreation Needs Assessment, which I think most of you are aware of, that effort that went on for better part of a year or more. The concept plan that is on page four identifies the, well, again, it's a concept plan that came out of that study. You could see a cricket pitch on there, multipurpose rectangular fields, cricket pitch in the area that Mr. Bornlocker was talking about in the southern area that's now been taken off, as well as a number of other facilities that was, that were identified in the 2012 study. And then last year, well, actually 2013, the Planning Board adopted a new open space and recreation plan that we had to do for funding purposes, but that, it basically incorporated the recreational recommendations that are in the 2012 study. So, the most current version of the open space and recreation plan of the township adopted by the Planning Board recommended what's on the concept plan on page four. adopted by the planning board recommended what's on the concept plan on page four. So, that's, that's what the master plan says. In my opinion, I think it's pretty clear that this site's been intended for a very long time for active recreation. If it had said something to the effect that it should be, like the Rigstown native grasslands, it should be open space and passive recreation, that's what this memo would have said, but frankly, it's not what the master plan has said through its various iterations. Do you want me to move on?
Yeah, I do, but let's just pause there, since you've given an ape synopsis of what the master plans and various plans, even in between the master plans, have said. See if the board has any questions about any of that. Okay. Given that, go ahead and to the Technical Review Committee comments with regards to this specific plan.
And again, this was, these are comments by TRC. We sat around a conference room with the concept plan, the latest one that Bob presented, and these are the things that we would recommend be considered when the plans are developed more fully. Number one, a traffic study should be prepared to determine the nature of roadway and/or intersection improvements, for example, Old Fleet Road, necessary to accommodate anticipated traffic. Any such improvements should be reflected on the engineering plans. We need to know what the traffic impact's going to be, then you design the access road and the surrounding roadways appropriately. Public water should be extended into the site to serve the proposed park facilities, so not on well. Engineering plans should propose fire hydrants in consultation with township staff. Bathroom facilities should be considered in conjunction with the cricket field pavilion. So, as of right now, I believe the rest facility is in the Phase One. I don't believe it's on Phase Two. So, the recommendation from TRC that facility, restroom facilities be proposed at both pavilions. And the proposed bathroom facilities should be connected to public sewer, so not a septic facility, but actually public sewer. It is our understanding that none of the recreation facilities would be lighted. If so, there would appear to be no need to light the parking lots. However, if parking lot lights are to be provided, they should be modest in height and power and shielded to prevent off-site glare. Next, the plan should specify, and I'll point to the map what I'm talking about here. The plan should specify the proposed treatment of the field areas surrounding the cricket fields. Would they be mowed regularly, mowed only occasionally, or left to grow? If not mowed regularly, paths should connect to the parking lot, pavilions to the fields. If portions are left to grow, for example, the areas between the pitches and the recreation areas, the growth would eventually serve to supplement the screening provided by existing vegetation. So, I'll point to the areas that we're talking about. Again, since it's a concept plan, it's not really saying what's going on here, but these ovals are the cricket pitches, this is the parking lot, so the question is, well, what's going on out here? So, with respect to, you know, if this is going to be left to grow, obviously, there need to be some paths or connections to the actual pitches. And then, on the outside, where it's adjoining residential, perhaps you just let it grow. Cedars will grow in, and within five, 10 years, you'll have a larger buffer than you could ever pay for, if you actually let it grow back. So, that's the consideration for the concept plan. Design and alignment of utilities and stormwater facilities should seek to minimize removal of trees beyond that presented on the concept plan. So, what that is saying is, again, since this is a concept, they haven't shown where the utilities are going to go, don't know exactly where the stormwater facilities are going to go, although this is suggesting the limit of tree removal. So, we're basically saying, try to keep that as tightly as possible when you're actually designing the engineering plans for the, for the park. And then lastly, the last few bullets, there's a number of, I'm not going to go through all of these, because there's a lot there, but it basically identified the distances between the different facilities and the surrounding residential areas. There's, the main area of concern that we identified is the area that's to the, I guess I'll say to the east, obviously because it's the closest in proximity to residential areas, that this area in particular be considered for some supplemental landscaping and buffering. There is a relatively substantial buffer there, consisting of mature trees, evergreen and deciduous, but because of the proximity, that should be looked at and see if there's ways to supplement that and fill in any gaps. That's basically it.
Questions of the board for Mark, or any comments on the Technical Review Committee comments on the concept plan? Going once, twice?
Question.
Todd? Make your last meaning.
Sure, why not? Obviously, a number of items have been identified for the southern community park, from the 2006 to the 2012 plans. Where, obviously, open or active recreation is a need per the master plans, are there active concepts out there for where baseball and soccer fields and the active recreation might be located? So, obviously, it's been taken off this plan. Is there an alternative already somewhere in discussion, maybe not to, you know, TRC, but in discussion for where those might be, since obviously, it has been identified as a need?
It has, in fact, been identified as a need. However, there are limited locations within the southern portion of the township where those needs can be met. As I spoke with, with Mr. Thomas earlier, one of the locations certainly is the Board of Education property on Clermont Road for the construction of athletic fields. Now, can the number of athletic fields that have been eliminated from this plan be built at that location? In all likelihood, no. I don't believe that that land is suitable in size to do that. You know, one of the things that was removed from this, from the first plan to the second was the basketball courts. There are no longer basketball courts included in this concept plan. However, there still has been some discussion at other advisory committees as to the need for those basketball courts. One discussion was the construction of additional basketball courts at DeLar Park, which is also in the southern half of the township. So, that, that will be pursued at a later time, once we get over this hurdle, then we can move on to those next ones. It's just, it really is a problem of limitation on the land available to us. There was discussion included in the master plan, I believe in 2006, that discussed the land that the township owns at the corner of Sedam Road and South Middlebush Road, the former Dunn Farm. Unfortunately, there are deed restrictions that don't allow the construction of active recreation facilities on that land or the Gunther Farm to the north. So, while those were discussed way back when, as they say, unfortunately, what we found is that the conservation deed restrictions on those properties do not allow for the construction of athletic fields there.
Thank you.
Other questions? Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's more of a comment, but about whether the area around the cricket pitches should be mowed. And while I agree, the area between the pitches and the residence probably should be allowed to grow up, I would hate to see the rest of it grow up, so that these become sort of hidden circles in, something like crop circles, yes. I think it would be much better for them to, for a number of reasons, safety among other things, for them to be visible.
And with that, with that comment, and perhaps there's more, just to be, you know, what the thought here is that this could form, this would end up being your memo to the council. So, if you want to make, so what I could suggest, we could make that clarification in the memo that goes to council.
If we say that this does conform, any of the things that we eliminated still remain in that section in the master plan, correct? As identified priorities, so that we can't say that they have disappeared. We can always look back and say, "We still need X, Y, Z," and, okay.
And not only that, you'll get a chance to do it again, because we have to redo the master plan for 2016, so, yeah, we'll be working on it this year.
I think the simple way is to answer that question, too, is, the master plan is a guide and it's a recommendation. How the township and how the council actually implement it is, you know, up to the discretion of the township.
Okay, so if there's, there's no other board questions, then open it up.
I'll make a motion to the public.
Yeah. Bob?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, if anybody from the public wants to comment on anything regarding the scope, I would urge you to at least keep to the scope that, you know, this is to examine whether it's conformant to the master plan and not, you know, whether it should be there or not, or the cricket field should be, you know, bigger or smaller, and, you know, stay within the thing than.
And if they have any comments on the site plan issues we discussed.
Yeah. Rajiv, you can start. If you just, since you don't have to be sworn in, just state your name and.
Yeah, Rajiv Prasad, Nine Coeur d'Alene Drive, Somerset, New Jersey. The last master plan that identifies baseball and other things, and had no mention of cricket, was prior to cluster homes and rezoning that we did, that brought in and changed the demographics of the southern part of town. And so, now you've got a whole lot of people from Commonwealth countries that play cricket that have moved into town, and comprise a substantial, up to about 20% of the township's population that does play cricket and watches cricket. And at one time, when Middlebush was being built, we, the cricketers wanted to see if they could just get a level playing field. They didn't really need a pitch as such. And at that time, they were told, "No, no, no, soccer's going in here, and football's going in here, and some baseball's going in here, so you're, you know, you've got to wait your turn, besides you want it in your neighborhood down south." So, they were told to take a backseat and wait, the Catalpa was being built. Well, now, when you do your master plan again, we would like to urge you to consider the demographics of the area, as well as the need, so it is not just for baseball and cricket. And just for historical fact, cricket was a game played in the United States by George Washington. If you actually go to his home, Mount Vernon, it's actually an oval in front of his house, and it is a cricket field. So, it is something that was played here. Baseball is something that came along much later. And if the, a resurrection of cricket is happening in the United States, and it is one of the fastest-growing sports in New Jersey itself, and there's been a lot of articles that I'd love to send to the planning board, if you'd like to know, for your own education, and as such, we'd like to keep that in mind when you redo your master plan. Now, in terms of being in compliance with the master plan, that is something for you to keep in mind, not only in the past one that omitted cricket, but also in the future where there is a need. And it was part of the needs survey for recreation also. So, they had surveyed the population and come back with the recommendation that these cricket fields be built. So, with that said, would urge you to keep that in consideration.
So, what you're saying, then, is that even with the three proposed here, you're saying there's still a need for more?
There is a huge need. In fact, we've got about 16 teams in town, and each one is required to have a home field before they can even participate in a league, and there are about 80 or 90 teams in New Jersey-wide leagues. So, to participate in them, and there are about eight of them waiting right now, if Alice, you know, knows the waiting list and everything else, and they're constantly coming back to her, saying, "Please give us some cricket fields." And we're trying to work out all kinds of ways to satisfy them, and I get inundated as well, so.
Well, to that point, since the master plan review is coming up, here's what would be helpful if you could do, is take that thought that you've just developed and, you know, write a memo to Mark and to Vince, so that we have it, you know, and come back during our master plan reexamination, and try to give us an idea of the need, how many more fields would be needed, and even better yet, where you might propose they would go, you know the township as well as anyone else, so that, you know, we can put something a little more specific in the next master plan.
Right, no.
That would be great.
We'll do that and make sure that.
Do that kind of thing, because I think the need is one thing, and maybe you can all appreciate.
Right.
Like Bob said, the place is to put it harder, so that's what we, yeah.
It is in the master plan, as recommended facility. So, it's not that it isn't in the master plan, we just need to find places to put it.
Yeah.
Right.
And that, that's the hard thing. I know they play on Weston Avenue.
Yeah, and even with the schools, when you talk to them about their building plans, please keep in mind that the kids, there is a whole bunch of Commonwealth country-origin kids that would love to learn to play, and then schools would be the ideal place for them to have at least some place to learn. So, just like we have T-ball and other things, this may be a place where people gladly volunteer to teach their kids, but they still need the facilities to be able to do so. So, that's something to keep in mind when you're reviewing things with the, with the building plans for the school expansion. So, thank you, and I appreciate it.
Thanks, Rajiv. Anybody else like to comment at all?
Mr. Chairman, seeing no one else coming forward, I would move that the public hearing be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, I think, Mark, what we'll do is make a motion, and is that what you need, right?
Yeah, I would recommend that you would make a motion. Mr. Mettler made a suggested clarification on the one paragraph with respect to letting the surrounding fields grow, only the areas that are between the cricket pitches and the residential. Other than that, it would basically, I think I would recommend that we take out the bullets that talk about the different distances, and just leave it to the actual recommendations that the planning board would have. The last few bullets on page five, most of those, I think, should come out, because it's just kind of factual background, it really was more for your benefit.
But I also agree with Mr. Mettler's recommendation about just allowing the growth between the homes and the cricket pitches, and keeping the area clear between the bathrooms and the cricket pitches.
I like that idea, too. I'd also like some specific verbiage that we would endorse, community garden.
Yep, absolutely. And then what I'd, so I think that would be the motion, and then, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to see the draft before it goes to the council, you can send it strictly, you know, send you the draft before it goes out.
Actually, you send it to the board. I don't want to be looking at anything the board doesn't look at, so, yeah. So, who would like to make?
I make a motion. Will you approve that?
I'll second.
Okay. I guess we can do a by-acclimation here. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. It looks to me as though that is basically all of our business for tonight, with the exception of the executive session, right, that we have to go into, so, let's give things a few minutes, and then we'll make a motion to, actually, we can go into, make the motion now. We do have a resolution to go into executive session. Can I, I'll make a motion that we do go into executive session?
Second the motion.
We do have a motion here? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Well, do we have to specifically adopt this resolution?
Yeah, that's what we just sort of voted on, is that resolution, that we're good, can go into the, go into executive session under this resolution. So, I just want to give a couple of seconds for everybody to clear out, and for the taping to stop, and we can actually have an executive session. So, if anybody needs a quick break, you can take it.
Chairman, I don't know if, are we recording off and everything, or if I can take two seconds?
Yeah, you need to tell them the taping can stop.
Yeah.
Has it? No?
No.
Oh.